For the swearing in, I have someone hold the Bible, right?
Yes.
Pretty much doable.
I don't know, you tell me.
I guess I'd have my wife hold the Bible. It's up to you. This is what I'm swearing in. I can read that. Little pieces.
Say it again, I'm going to do it.
After you.
Yes, sir. That's yours. Man, I'm kicked out of my system. You can't have my coffee. Are we ready? Are we ready? We'll call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call.
Hillingworth.
Here.
Kimbrell. Absent. Patterson.
Here.
Rusterholtz.
Here.
We would please let stand for the pledge allegiance and Mrs. Cheryl Steen, will you please lead us?
Oh, sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
America, we love you.
Please stand for our moment of silence, please. We've all educators here have made an oath, a declaration to uphold our constitution. The preamble of our constitution reads, "We, the people of Colorado, with profound reverence for the supreme ruler of the universe, in order to form a more perfect, independent, and perfect government, establish justice, ensure tranquility, provide for the common defense, and promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity." Thank you. We have a motion to approve this evening's agenda. So move. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Hillingworth.
Aye.
Patterson. Patterson.
Here. Yes.
Prove tonight's agenda soon.
Rusterholtz.
Yes. Moving on, tonight we will finally fill all of our vacant seats as we swear in to, uh, for Mr. Mick Bates. Mick, will you come forward, please? How many board members have we had so far? You are now our third new one.
Third new one. I thought you were counting overall, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mick, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Thank you. This is Mick Bates and his lovely wife, Colleen. Repeat after me. I, Mick Bates.
I, Mick Bates.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of school director.
Of the office of school director.
As required by law.
As required by law.
And will support the Constitution of the United States.
And will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the laws made pursuant thereto.
And the laws made pursuant thereto.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's sign right here. And you are welcome to join us.
Thank you.
All right. Onto our time of public comment. During public comment, please be aware that any personal or individual student matters are considered confidential under Colorado law, and it is out of respect of the law and our employees and students that we require those discussions take place privately in executive session. It is requested that individual comments be limited to three minutes for a total of 15 minutes for a particular topic. The intent of public comment is give the Board of Education the opportunity to hear your comments. However, the Board will make no decision nor take any action on public comment during the meeting. Thank you. Who has our list of... Okay, we will be drawing from the bowl.
Chris Idzik.
Is that how you pronounce it?
I-D-Z-I-K.
I-D-Z-I-K. And your topic is... S, what is this? What is your topic, social studies standards?
Good evening. Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening, Board. Thank you so much and welcome to the Board, sir.
Thank you.
I would actually, if I may, cede my time to Anton Shulsky, who is here to speak. I cannot cede my time.
The speakers are drawn randomly.
Okay.
Good evening.
Sir, what is your name again?
My name is Anton Shulsky, and I am the social studies teacher in Colorado Springs, and I currently serve as the immediate past president for the National Council for the Social Studies. In its 102nd year, NCSS is the largest professional association in the country devoted solely to social studies education. I'd like to thank the Board for welcoming, for allowing me to speak this evening, and a warm welcome to the community. And we've seen the debate over standards in this country over the last few years heightened and intensified by those who spend little time actually engaging with those standards. The position of NCSS has remained consistent that the standards that are adopted should be grounded in content area scholarship, reflect the best practices in social studies education, be inclusive for all student backgrounds and ability levels. In the last month, the Woodland Park School Board adopted the Civic Alliance American Birthright Standards as curriculum guidance for their social studies classes. I'm not here to debate every single aspect of those standards, some of which have been suggested address less than 30% of the recently adopted Colorado academic standards. I am here, however, to talk about two specific issues. NCSS has determined that the suggested standards developed by the Civic Alliance do not align with best practices related to the development of social study standards. If implemented in schools, these suggested standards would have damaging and lasting effects on the civic knowledge of our students and their capacity to engage in civic reasoning and deliberation. NCSS does not endorse or support the use of those standards. Now, NCSS is also one of the few professional education associations that proudly has a professional code of ethics. Integrity, justice, authenticity, civic engagement, responsibility, and democratic values are the cornerstone of our code of ethics. We state that these principles act as guide rails for social studies professionals who, as curriculum instruction gatekeepers, act within ethical boundaries for themselves, their peers, students, the community, and the democratic society overall. By adopting the Birthright Standards, the School Board is mandating that social studies teachers ignore their code of professional ethics. I ask yourselves this: Do you ask a doctor, lawyer, engineer, or minister to ignore their code of ethics?
One minute.
If the answer is, of course not, then why are you asking social studies teachers, the professional and classroom, to do the same? In March of 2022, the four professional organizations of teachers of English, math, science, social studies issued a joint statement called "The Freedom to Teach." Together, we said, "Teachers need our support. They need our trust. They need to have the freedom to exercise their professional judgment." That freedom includes the freedom to decide what material best suits their students in meeting their needs and demands of the curriculum, the freedom to discuss disturbing parts of American history if and when they judge students are ready for it. In short, teachers need the freedom to prepare students to become future members of a democratic society who engage in making responsible and informed contributions and decisions about our world. Thank you very much.
Support for school. Cheryl Steen.
I'm Dr. Cheryl Steen. I've been here since 1998. I'm here to present, can you hear me? pertinent facts and news that's just not getting mentioned by other people who want to speak at these meetings. Some think that the division going on in these meetings is only happening here in Woodland Park, but in fact, it's happening nationwide. I read in three different newspapers this month about the 1.4 million student exodus from public schools in 2022. Now, that year was countered...
That's gotta help.
Thank you. Whoa! Love it. Okay. So, yeah, 100... I'm sorry, 1.4 million students leave the public schools in 2022. Now, this year, that was countered by 77,000 enrollment, which leaves 1,323,000 students that left the public schools and have not returned. So, one quote in the paper said, "The public school system failed to gain back the confidence of the parents who withdrew children in a mass response to the pandemic era. The lockdowns, the not listening to parents, the mask mandates, all increased dissatisfaction with traditional K-12 education." A survey by Education Next showed that this decline could actually be closer to 2 million, and that declined sharply between 2020 and 2022. It was declining all along and then hit a real bad, sharp decline. People left traditional public schools for other educational options. The other options, of course, are charter schools, private schools, homeschools, microschools. People are getting very creative about how to educate their children. And it seems these drop-away students are comfortable with their choice and won't be returning to the traditional public schools. And where does that leave us? That leaves school boards dealing with facilities that are underutilized, which can lead to school closures. And I remember clearly, two years ago, they were talking about closing a whole school because we didn't have enough students. Now, two weeks ago, the Gazette published an article that said "Our school district had figured out how to increase enrollment when everybody else but one other school in this state was declining." So, they increased it by 15.83%.
One minute.
And our district had 290 students increase from 2021 to 22. Our district adapted to the changing educational environment. Our district offered more options to families through more school choice and various programs at every level of learning using continued partnerships with parents. And I want to express gratitude and encouragement for this School Board making hard decisions in spite of the opposition that seemed oblivious to this dilemma. There's been backlash I thought I'd never see. Some people who voted for this School Board say they regret their vote. Most of the time, it's because they regret all this tension in the School Board meetings. It's good to support teachers. I taught here in the school. The goal is education, and it will work best if we pay attention to the students and the parents. So, thank you very much. There are a lot of people who really appreciate what you're doing.
Sarah Bogat. Scaring traditional public schools. Sarah.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Bogat, and I live within the Columbine Elementary boundaries. I'm here tonight instead of putting my two-year-old to bed, instead of smuggling my three-month-old baby because I'm a passionate believer in the value of traditional public education. And I want to preserve a strong traditional public school option in Woodland Park for my kids. This Board claims that the cornerstone of its governance is parental choice. So, I'm standing here as a Woodland Park parent whose kids still have all 12 years of school ahead of them to say that my choice is traditional public school. My choice is traditional public school teachers who aren't just experts in their subjects, but experts in the art of education. My choice is traditional public school infrastructure: the classrooms, school lunches, buses, and buildings that I'm happy to pay for with my tax dollars out of every hard-earned paycheck. My choice is a traditional public school environment where my kids may and hopefully will encounter peers and teachers with different belief systems, family structures, priorities, and backgrounds that they're used to at home. My choice is an unequivocally secular traditional public school education because even though I grew up in the Christian church and still identify as such, I respect the many kids and families in our community with different backgrounds, recognizing that the appropriate forums for religious instruction are homes and places of worship, not public schools. My choice is a traditional public school curriculum, one developed and approved by experienced educators that provides a strong foundation in math, literacy, technology, and history. A curriculum that exposes my kids to different ideas and ways of thinking that helps them become problem solvers and good team members, and yes, occasionally makes them a little uncomfortable. I'm a Woodland Park parent, and I choose traditional public school. I urge this Board to trust our community's teachers and cease interfering with their choices of instructional materials and elective courses. I urge this Board to cease siphoning resources away from traditional public schools, including infrastructure and financial resources. I urge this Board to adopt standards and curriculum that are developed and approved by experienced educators. I urge this Board to hire a permanent superintendent with a robust background as an educator, specifically in the traditional public school system. I urge this Board to set an example of compassion, empathy, and respect in its interactions with this community. You claim to value parental choice above anything else. I am a Woodland Park parent, and I choose traditional public school.
Trina Heffling, support attack in students.
Trina.
Maybe it's a name.
Trina Heffling. Hockling.
Just couldn't read it, sorry.
I have crappy handwriting.
That's okay.
You're a one to follow, huh? I don't have a lot of remarks. I just have something that's... I want to speak to the way we're talking about teachers in this community, and it concerns me. The teachers are terrified to have normal conversations with their students. I used to be a high school teacher in a different part of the world. One way I paid my school loans was by working for the mental health services. I did dictation for psychiatrists and mental health workers. I knew the backstory of what was happening in my students' homes, and it was terrifying. Teachers need to be a safe place for students to go. If you knew the raw statistics of incest and domestic and child abuse in people's families... I know that's not true for anybody in this room, but it is happening in our community. Our suicide is high. We have suicide awareness campaigns happening right now. Teachers have been trained to handle difficult conversations with students who are afraid to tell the truth to their families. So, I'm talking to all of you to stop thinking that teachers are out to indoctrinate your students. They are here to help and to listen and to be a safe space. And what I see happening in this community, I zoom in on this. I've not been to a board meeting to speak up because I have no children in the school district. But what I see happening terrifies me because students are being hung out to dry by well-intentioned parents who don't know better. That's all.
Ally Oriana.
Ally.
I'm going to get a little bit because it matters a lot to me. Hello, my name is Ally Oriana, and I'm a sophomore at the Woodland Park High School. You know me as a student representative of the deck and maybe a student who toured around the school. What you don't know is how much I love my school. I have been with these students sitting behind me who I've gone to school with every day for 12 years. We have been through the transition to middle school, high school, and through online school and quarantine. We've been through the good times and the bad. This is my family, and Woodland Park is my home. Everyone in the schools will tell you this, teachers, staff, and students alike. Teachers get up and come to school every day to support us. They have a passion for nurturing and seeing kids grow into young adults. You don't know the amount of passion that they have until you've actually been into their classrooms. They pour their heart and soul into these jobs because for them, it's more than a job. You took one of my teachers away from me, and I know for a fact that you don't know what her or what she did for our community, our school, and for me. Calling her a job you no longer needed? Did you know that when you moved her, you also moved a trusted adult, a mentor, a leader, and someone who deserves everyone's respect? Did you know that she welcomed everyone into her doors when they needed advice, a friend, or just someone to have some good times with? These words don't deserve her justice. Sarah Lee deserves more than what you have gave her. She deserves to be heard like we all do. You tell us you want to listen, and I want to believe that. I so badly want to believe that. And I'm not one that turns my back easily, but over and over again, I'm disappointed. You promised students time with Mr. Witt. That was canceled. And then you promised us questions that were not our intention. Once again, we wait on you to come into our classroom to have a dialogue with us, but that has not happened yet. If you want the trust of the community back, then listen to us, actually listen to us. I'm asking you to spare my family from whatever plans you have for us because they aren't what we need. We need unity, and what you have done has given us the opposite. Though you have been elected to those chairs that you sit in, it does not mean you're above us, or me, or any of us, but we are all leaders here. In my sources class, we sit in a circle so that everyone is equally seen and heard. Your desks are also arranged in a half-circle, and we make up the other half. If you want to make decisions for me and represent me, then listen to me. So, take down some walls, listen to us, and those on the other side may listen too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Nate Owen.
Good evening, Board of Directors. Good evening, Superintendent. I'm here on behalf of WPEA, and I'm excited to give you a report and a glimpse into just some of the amazingness of our staff in the school district. Tonight, I'm here to give you a report that focuses on some of the amazing things that our elementary schools have done recently and some of their upcoming events. At Summit Elementary, their staff showed up for a fabulous showcase night last week, focused on making connections. They were even able to feature some of the family-owned businesses in the community. The K kids at Summit are raising funds to support Focus on the Forest, and they will be making a presentation next Wednesday to our local Kiwanis Club. The teachers and students are both eager to continue the tradition of adopting classes and exchanging handmade valentines across the building to share their love with each other. And finally, the Destination Imagination team is preparing for the regional competition in Denver next Saturday, February 25th. At Gateway Elementary, they're doing week-long project-based classes right now that are happening for all students. Students get the chance to learn and use different, unique experiences to learn about such things like arts and crafts, rocket making, rock climbing, coding, Egyptology, stealth making, hiking, dancing, singing, sewing, spreading kindness through school enhancement projects, sending homemade cards, building ninja courses, studying astronomy, but the list keeps going on and on. These discovery classes are an amazing success with the students, and they are continually raving about their experiences, and they are stoked for each upcoming session. The parent involvement is through the roof this year. Over 70% of their parents spent the day last December at Gateway for their first-ever leadership day, showcasing the leadership of the students. It was an incredible day, full of events such as a sing-along and student presentations throughout the day.
One minute.
Gateway is truly rocking because when it comes down to it, it is their deepest desire to benefit... it is their deepest desire to benefit all students and that keeps their engines running. At Columbine, we had over 400 people attend Columbine Showcase last week and parents got to see firsthand all the wonderful things that they're doing at the school every day. This coming Friday, they're having their annual grandparents and special friends day, which is a way that they can invite special people into their children's lives to share fun classroom bonding activities such as snacks and a musical performance with the school. Their steam and maker space is now fully operational with a room large enough to store all of their engineering and building materials that they operate over 10 different types of robots Columbine has. Students have been designing and creating their own inventions. They even have a model of a castle that offers a rescue the princess challenge that will eventually have robotic alligators in their room. Each and every one of these schools is important and brings value to the community as a whole. We would love to have our community members, our parents, the board, and the superintendent come visit them so we can show you all the greatness that our elementary teachers and our students are doing in person.
You were here. You were here that night. You missed all that.
My daughter was having twins.
You were here. Record meeting scheduled on top of showcase night.
Oh, that one. Okay.
Bridget Curran, Student Support.
Hi, my name is Bridget Curran and I'm a longtime resident whose kids are the fourth generation of students in Woodland Park. I am deeply saddened by the state of our school district. I'm seeing politics rear its ugly head when the focus should be on the most important stakeholder, the students. I'm seeing an autominous authoritarian board make quick decisions without the conversations or support of the community that they were elected to represent. In particular, the interim superintendent was announced the sole candidate on December 7th. On the 14th and 19th of that same month, our primary stakeholders, free-thinking, intelligent, well-educated, critical thinkers were making their voices heard with protests of his candidacy. These students sit on the DAC, are active in student government. They've organized petitions. They're here at board meetings. However, their voices landed on deaf ears. January 1st was the interim superintendent's first day on the job. By the 10th, there was an agenda announcement for a change in the social studies standard, giving the community only 24 hours to research, educate themselves on what was being proposed. The American birthright standard. On the 11th, the community pleaded to the board to define what change meant for our students, curriculum, and their future. Again, those pleas fell on deaf ears. The board moved to adopt, regardless of the concerns from the community unanimously. Outrage sparked during the meeting as the community was upset that once again, they were ignored. The board has continually rushed these adoptions, policy changes, and revisions, which we will witness again tonight. Then there was the special board meeting on the 25th to interview candidates for District 8. The questions asked, which sparked outrage again, was another display that this board doesn't represent the students, parents, teachers, or staff.
One minute.
Look at a 2021 email. To quote the board's VP, "The idea is that if you advance on many fronts at the same time, then the enemy cannot fortify, defend, effectively counterattack at any one front. Divide, scatter, conquer." I would ask yourselves, could the questions asked on the 25th by the board VP of hot-button topics be used to divide, scatter, conquer? The students see through the board. They are demonstrating that they won't fall for hate-filled fear tactics. These students use logic, not emotion. I'm asking, please don't let this board use polarizing issues to smokescreen their political agendas. Make sure that we are united and Panthers strong. Let's work together to ensure that our students will live in a society of acceptance, empathy, open-mindedness, and tolerance like their future depends on it, because it does.
Holly Sample, Indoctrination.
Well, board members, thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. My name's Holly Sample. I'm a graduate of Woodland Park High School. It's been some time. My mother was a teacher here for 33 years and I was an educator for 34 years, but not in this district. The two topics I'd like to speak to you about tonight are freedom and rule of law. And those are two things that I heard members of this board speak about that I'd like to address. Freedom, the freedom that we enjoy in this country requires an educated and engaged citizenry. It's been 20 years now that I had the opportunity to hear from Thomas Sutherland speak as I lived in Fort Collins. As you probably or may know, Thomas Sutherland was kidnapped by Islamic jihadists in 1985 and held captive until 1981. And when he came to speak to the academic all-stars in Fort Collins, it was near the end of the 1990s. He spoke about his experience in captivity. And one of the things that he said got him through those six years was the reading of books. And he managed to convince his captors, who were very young men, to bring him all kinds of books. He was a professor at Beirut University. And they brought him books, but they were fascinated by the books because these young men had no access to books. They had one line of indoctrination that they were told. They had guns and they were told what to think. And they were amazed that this man would have access to so many ideas and be able to think about those with them. So I'm asking you to realize that withholding books from our students is setting them up for indoctrination, not for good citizenship. The other thing I want to talk about is the rule of law. And under the rule of law, we're not allowed to just choose which laws we decide to follow. And there are two laws I think this board is disregarding. One is the social studies standards that require that our teachers address diversity and that students are taught about a wide range of experiences of the citizens of this state, whether they be citizens who experience racism or different backgrounds or different gender or sexuality. So that's in the law. I didn't bring my phone up or I would quote it to you. And the other one I believe that you are disregarding is the United States Constitution, Amendment 14, which requires due process before depriving someone of life, liberty, or property. And I believe that the story of teacher Sarah Lee fits into that and she deserves due process. Thank you.
Amy Wolin, Public Comment. Just says, "Public Comment."
Hi, my name is Amy Wolin. I am a parent and community member and a former employee and a longtime volunteer. I wanted to read to you GP 5, which is up for your discretion. And I believe that the board is not following its GP 5, which is Governance Process, Board Members' Code of Conduct. The board commits itself and its members to ethical, professional... I'll say it again, ethical, professional, and lawful conduct. Accordingly, number one, board members must represent the interests of the citizens of the entire school district. This accountability to the whole district supersedes any conflicting loyalty to other advocacy or interest groups or citizens of a director district and membership on other boards or staffs. It also supersedes the personal interest of any board member. Number two, while board members are able to interact and communicate with staff, board members do not have or may not attempt to exercise individual authority over the district except as explicitly set forth in the board policies. A, members' interaction with the superintendent or with staff must recognize the lack of authority vested in individuals except when explicitly authorized by the board. B, members' interaction with the public, press, or other entities must recognize the same limitation and the ability of any board member to speak for the board except to repeat explicitly stated board decisions.
One minute.
And C, members will not publicly make or express individual negative judgments about superintendent or staff performance. Any such judgments of superintendent performance will be made only by the board, meeting in executive session as appropriate. I believe the events in December and January violated, the actions of this board violated your own policy. And I think that someone needs to hold you accountable. I am beyond disappointed. My own student, well, I was accused of being beyond contempt for something I didn't do, which I did not guide or influence my student in any way. My child is an independent thinker, as are many of our esteemed, well, many of our Woodland Park students. They are learning these skills as 21st century skills and it's important for their survival and for their thriving. And I am beyond disappointed in the actions that I have seen this board take on our beloved students and our beloved staff who are doing an amazing job in these times.
One more. Andrew Papadakis.
Hi, I have an analogy, but I may stumble on this a little bit. I forgot my spectacles. Tried to make it three minutes. I had to cut it down from nine, so. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Please forgive me if I breathe, trying to breathe. So can we get this out of the way? The Declaration of Independence is absolutely part of our curriculum. No one is teaching the Constitution who has not read it. And while both may be construed as reverent texts, the Constitution and Bible are not the same thing. The teaching of social studies has never been a partisan issue for me. It doesn't work that way if you're serious about it. What is it then? German writer Hermann Hass once said, "To study history means submitting yourself to chaos, but nevertheless retaining your faith in order and meaning." There's no objective reason why the New Deal and the Reagan Revolution can't be taught within the same context of American rejuvenation. Similarly, there is no objective benefit to leaving out an academic analysis of odious public policies. What do we have to fear from seeing our own shortcomings? Are there not moments in time that we must never forget? What's the point of not forgetting historical events without a constructive application of their meaning? This meaning is both triumph and pain. Our students are allowed their own points of view on issues contentious or not and they are encouraged to see others as well. Open minds and the inclination for critical thought is how we proceed into the future with the hopes of embracing our potential and standing proudly in the face of challenges. If it's indoctrination you fear so much, you need look no further than the limitations presented by anti-intellectual censorship and the suppression of the free speech and expression through fear and intimidation. It is ubiquitous in authoritarian governments that deceive with platitudes while usurping freedom. In the home of the brave, we should look for it in our own homes. Where antiquated and threadbare cliches and rhetoric may be bandied about as if our posterity has no right to its own self-determination. An open mind and a discerning intellect allow us to embrace the diversity of opinion that ought to be present in the marketplace of free ideas.
One minute.
I don't fear this and neither should anyone here. As well, there is nothing wrong with self-awareness. On the contrary, it is a blessing. I have become convinced that there are better ways to encourage student success than the my-way or the highway approach that I brought with me when I came here almost 20 years ago. At first, I chanted the idea that what I knew to be right wasn't in everyone else's best interest. Oh yeah, I could be hard to deal with back in the day. But you see, I was convinced of my righteous path. Eventually, though, the compassionate doubt in this place and its people convinced me to take a look at the teacher, the coach, the man, and even the husband and father that I thought I was and that with the same compassionate approach, I could be better at each. Allowing myself to hear what others have to offer and introspection for the purpose of understanding my own shortcomings allowed me the willingness to act to change them. This did not weaken me. I retain my manly firmness, thank you very much. If you're curious about that one, see Jefferson's Declaration. This is the kind of growth that we want for our children, fearless and profound. We do this by modeling and teaching it without our own fears projected into it. I owe much of this understanding to Dell, Tina, Kevin, Sarah, and especially Karen. There have been others as well, many of whom are listening right now, some of whom have moved on. Additionally, I have been blessed to know many students and parents from different belief systems who are walking the same path for themselves and allowing me to walk with them. These were and are the true people of faith to me. This belief in personal betterment has been here all along and is encouraged still by the very people who suffer daily, the slings and arrows of outrageous fortune, malign as if they were doing the opposite. I look the truth at this possibility and I refuse to believe that this nation of ours is so soft that it can't also look in the mirror every so often as we ask our children to. I am of the belief that when a nation as great as our own embraces its whole past and celebrates its wonders while reconciling itself with its mistakes, it becomes great in every sense of the word. My own children excel here and are successful in college thanks to this district's people and its offerings. My little ones are compassionate spiritual beings and they intend to do compassionate works in the service of others. They learn that here from the people here. Such spiritual nourishment has been here all along. I for one urge you not to deprive this district's other children of the opportunity to experience that same profound and yes, patriotic enrichment with an anti-intellectual approach to thinking and to historical study. Change is inevitable.
Mr. Papadakis, how much more time do you need?
10 seconds. This board has demonstrated that compromise, not transference, is the mark of a representative democracy in constant search of its better angels. You've shown that you're going to do what you're going to do. Maybe though, consider mitigating extreme positions lest your own righteous indignation and haughty recriminations of others does more harm than good. I appreciate the extra time very much. Thank you for listening. Peace.
Thank you very much for your public comment tonight. I did appreciate it. Onto our next. We're on to Consent Agenda, Roman numeral 6. I'd like a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Bates?
Aye.
Hillingworth?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Restor Holtz?
Aye.
Next, Roman numeral 7, Discussion and Information. We will have the first reading. Did I skip over something?
No.
Okay. You're looking at me like I'm doing something wrong. Good. First reading of Board Governance Policy Revision, GP 5, Board Members' Code of Conduct. Mr. Witt.
As we've been undertaking and will continue to undertake, a review of board policies on a monthly basis. We've come up to GP 5 and the one requested change here is at the introduction of the governance process... at the introduction of the governance process, there's a statement of, the prior statement was board members must represent the interests of the citizens of the entire school district. We want to make certain that we're focusing on education and that we're putting our families and our students first. We want to make certain that, we make that clear in everything we do. And in that regard, the recommended edit is board members must represent the educational interests of the students and their families as first priority, as well as the citizens of the entire school district. That is the only change. There is no vote on this. This is simply brought to the board as first reading. Yeah, I read it first.
Any discussion? Mr. Hillingworth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I read over this. And quite frankly, I'm very undecided on it right now, which I think is appropriate for a first reading. I'll just say that I don't think the law itself specifies one priority over another. And I, you know, I just, I think we'll have to be cautious whenever we are sort of setting out a policy what a board member's individual priorities would be. I agree, of course, with the sentiment that families must always come first in making our decisions, although, of course, we always represent all the citizens of the school district. But I'll just have to say I'm still rolling it around in terms of whether or not this is a change that we should make or not, just as a policy.
Mrs. Patterson? Mr. Bates?
Nothing done.
I have a similar concern to yours, Dave, that we do represent all of the voters, all of the people in the school district. And with that, parents and students as well. But we represent the educational interests and the assets and everything associated with the school, so. Yeah, I want to think about that a little bit more, too. I would also like to hear some public comment, not public comment, but, you know, contact me briefly. I get these wonderful long emails, and I think, oh my word, and I try to read everyone and answer everyone. But no, I would like to hear from you as well. So if you send me something brief, I would appreciate it. Students as well.
Anything else? Any other comments? Okay. We are on to Roman numeral eight, action. First, Ms. Cassens.
Right. So we were asked to come back with, back in December, we were asked to come back with some calendar recommendations. So I wanted to give some background to get everyone kind of back up to speed with calendar as we'll need to, we'll be asking for a resolution, for an action item. So just some historic background. Typically, we have a spring district calendar committee comprised of administration, staff, teachers, parents, students, community members that come together and build out the district calendar. This was historically. Historically, we have three years out so that people can make plans. Sometimes people schedule vacations quite far in the future. In the spring of 2019, we did a pretty major re-hall on the district calendar, taking a look at just, we did a lot of surveying and talking. And we did some redesign that led to a later start, so we started later in August. And we went later past Memorial Day. So the last few years we went past, and of course, then we went into the pandemic. So we start, when we redesigned in the spring of 2019, we moved that back. Additionally, in the spring of 2019, for the 19, 20 school year, we added the week-long breaks. So the week-long break in October, the week-long break in February, and less of the holiday long weekends. So that led to more full weeks of instruction. That was one thing that that board at that time asked us to look at. It also led to opportunities for our high school students to get caught up on those long breaks. We had tutoring during those long breaks for students so they didn't continue to fall behind if they were getting behind. We also encouraged our families to take their vacations and hunting trips on those long breaks, as they, students sometimes on long vacations or hunting trips were missing full weeks of school. And we also felt that they helped our staff and students, and we have some data that staff and students say that, that it was a nice mental health break. I think post-pandemic, it was also a chance for some health, kind of a break in health. So currently, I know we have some higher numbers with sicknesses, and we're coming up on that February break, and we know that five days off will make a huge difference when we all kind of go away from a crowded room like this. And, and so it helped with some health benefits. So this is a little bit of historic background. Currently, here's what's gotten us to tonight. A standing calendar had been built by that calendar committee many years ago, and it had been delayed. That was brought to the board at a work session for discussion, and then to a board meeting for approval. It was removed from the consent calendar due to some concerns. So at that point, the board requested that I go out and get some more feedback and bring back a calendar. So that's what happened on that November date. Our executive team sat and looked, because when you throw a calendar out, you can debate everything on the calendar. So we looked at what the major things were that defined a calendar. So really, that's when does school start and when does it get out? And mostly, it's when do you get out? Do you get out before Memorial Day or do you get out after? So when does winter break start? Do we go close to the holidays, or do we get out in time for people to prepare for the holidays? Do we come back right after the new year or ways after the new year? And then looking at the breaks, the week-long breaks versus the four-day weekends around holidays. So at that point, we identified these areas. We took a survey out to parents and teachers and got some information, which I'm going to show you. We also took it out to every school accountability committee and asked for feedback. So that was an extensive discussion at each school accountability committee in December. So they gave some feedback on that. And then we are here tonight with a final recommendation. So let's talk about some of the feedback. So again, and hopefully this will make sense, starting early in August and ending my Memorial Day, or starting late and ending after. We moved it because if you're in Woodland Park, August is hot. Our buildings are hot. They're not air-conditioned. May, it's still snowy. Like, we've gotten out before and we're like, we'd have a snow day today, but it's summer vacation. So we felt like, could we, could we look at that? So if you look at that, starting early, ending early, so basically get out before Memorial Day, 40% of our parents requested that, 48% of staff, compared to going after Memorial Day, 44% of parents, 38% of staff. Kind of what we expected is kind of a toss-up. So we went to our SAT groups. Our high school SAT group kind of landed on that they liked coming early and getting out early. Most of that is because it evens out the semesters for high school kids, which is a pretty big deal. So it makes our semesters more even for high school kids in their, in their classes. Our Gateway and Summit SAT groups liked ending after Memorial Day. They liked that schedule. Our middle school and Columbine were kind of like, do we have a little of each? Or they couldn't decide. Like, they, they sat at the table also, and half the table wanted one thing and half wanted the other. So this was the first point. Second point was the winter break. So we go early to the holidays, lots of time before the holidays hit, and we return early after the new year. Or we go late to the holidays and we return later after the new year. So you'll see that early to holidays, early to return, 35 and 29%. Late to holidays, late to return, 45 and 59%. So this one kind of weighed this way. You'll see also, we had three SAT groups, Gateway, Summit, and High School, that liked the late to late. Again, High School was really centered around evening out the semesters. So it gave us a few more days to get a little closer to that. Again, middle school and Columbine were kind of a little bit of a. If you look at the structure of breaks, this was a really big discussion point. So the full week breaks, and in a minute, I'm going to show you some calendars so you can see what we're talking about. The full week breaks, we have a full week break in October. We have a full week break for Thanksgiving. We have a break at Christmas. We have a full week break in February. We have spring break in March. And we have a longer weekend in April. So we had built kind of what looks a lot different is that full week in October and the full week in February. So when you look at that, 42% of our parents said they liked the full weeks. 60% of our staff liked the full weeks. And you're going to hear the staff, because it is that mental health break, and they also get to chump together their professional development, which means learning something and then being able to apply it versus single days. If you look at long weekends around holidays, and we had some samples, 39% of our parents, well, we had samples, 39% of our parents said long weekends, 29% of staff. If you look at SAT groups, interestingly, middle school and high school said, we think it affects elementary kids a lot more, so we defer to some elementary. And interestingly, two of our elementary SAT groups said they liked the full weeks off. And then one was undecided or would like to look at a compromise. So something that maybe had a little bit of both. So what I have for you here, I have what we're going to call option one, which is a compromised revision. Because what you see is we land all over the place when we talk calendar, and that's true every year. Here, back in the day, we once threw out four-day weeks, and that was also this kind of crowd for 40 weeks. So we also have here, we were asked to bring what you might call a traditional calendar, which is a tough thing to define. And I'm going to show you what some schools downtown look like. But there's really not traditional calendars anymore. So what we did was we went back to pre the 2019 revision, back to maybe what we did five, 10 years ago in calendars, or what maybe calendars have looked like traditionally in public schools. So, and if you look at these two things, you'll see that the compromised option, what it does is it still leaves the October full week break, but we separated the conference day so that it wasn't an additional day for kids, so that it was a really long break. So we brought it back up here. And in February, as a compromise, we went back second semester into long weekends. So we kind of kept first semester with the long week break, and we put second semester with three-day weekends. So you're going to see, here's MLK Day, here's the long President's holiday, so it's not a full week. Here's an April break. It's not a longer weekend. So we, as a compromise, since it seemed to be split, we put a full week in the fall and we put long weekends in the spring. So that was the compromised calendar. If you look at a more traditional calendar, you'll notice that it starts later in August, but that's because it compacts the calendar. So it doesn't have as many breaks in the middle. So when you compact the calendar, you start a little later. You'll see that the main differences, same breaks in September on both calendars. In October, though, it has a conference day followed by a day off and a PD day, a professional development day. So it's like a five-day weekend in October versus a full week off. November looks the same. December looks the same. January looks the same. February looks different. It just has one more day in the February break, because this was a compromise. March looks the same. April looks the same. May looks the same. So these are the two calendars that we have for you to look at tonight. I'm going to show you one thing, and then I'll answer any questions you might have. So the question is, what do people do downtown? So again, if you look at these calendars, it's about when do we start and end, and what do the October and February breaks look like? So if you go downtown, you know, we're proposing starting the 17th here, the 23rd here. Downtown, schools start about the 14th, 15th, 17th, 18th. Might look here at D-49, they follow a not-traditional calendar. So they almost do a little more of a year-round kind of look. They go to school for a whole quarter, and then they have a two-week break in the fall. And then they go for another quarter, and then they have a two-week break at Christmas. And then they go another quarter and have two weeks off for spring break. So they, you'll notice, start much earlier. So we're not proposing that, but I wanted you to see that calendars are kind of all over the place. As far as ending, pretty much everybody's ending before Memorial Day. However, Academy District 20 lists the 29th as their end day, but Academy reserves the rights, if they don't use their snow days, to back up the end of the school year. So if they get to the end and go, we didn't use the snow days, we're done now. So I don't know how, I don't know how Sue may tell people, but they, they back up the end. So if they don't use snow days, so a lot of times they're done also before Memorial Day. So winter break, there was a lot of conversation about, this is a really long winter break. And we're like, yep. If you look, I counted student days, so those are the red days. We have 11 plus two professional days. So kids are out 11, 13 weekdays, if you want to think of it like that. Manitou's 14, Cheyenne Mountain 13, D-11 13, D-20 13, D-49 11. So we're pretty much in line with the region that the winter break is about 13 or 14 student days. If you look at their October break, though, here's what happens downtown a lot. We took a whole week, or here, we would just have three days. Because October's conference time, you get a lot of like, Manitou, early in the month has a three-day weekend, later in the month has another three-and-a-half-day weekend. Cheyenne Mountain has a four-day weekend early in the month, followed by another four-day weekend. Because they use the first one to get ready for conferences, and the second one is conferences and professional development. Same thing with D-11. If you look, this is what you might call traditional. Most of the schools have a four-day weekend early and then a four-day weekend late, and D-49 has two weeks off. Same thing in February. You'll see that most of the schools, so we were saying a February four-day weekend or three-day weekend. Downtown, again, they do an early one for conferences, and then they do another one. So two-and-a-half-day, four-and-a-half-day, three-day, three-day. Some of them push it into March. So D-11 has a three-day weekend in February around President's Day, and then a four-day weekend in early March. And then D-20 does a four-day weekend in February, but they go to spring break early. So they put that extra time as a, like a week and a half off at spring break. So here's our hope tonight, is that we are at a point where we need to have an action item on a calendar, because we have people asking. I think people, actually, even some of them have trips already based on our previous calendar. We need an action to approve in a calendar, and then we need recommendations on how we kind of propagate that into the next two years. Because we'd like to be ahead for our families, for our sports activities, believe it or not, they start scheduling into the future, tryout dates, and all that kind of stuff. So these are the two calendars that we've brought for you to look at, the compromise, which comes from all the feedback we got. So this came about after listening to all of our SAT groups and surveys. This was a, this was a look at what might be called a more traditional calendar.
Let me add just one thing to what Tina just said. And thank you very much, Tina. That was a very good presentation, good information. I want to make certain that you know that I think the best three-year projection step would be to say, whatever we adopt tonight, we try to replicate for the next couple of years. She's not asking you to come up with three new ideas for three new years of calendars. I think that would be hard on everyone. So whatever we adopt tonight, I would strongly request that we take it as our template and try to be consistent with it for a couple more years.
And we always write on the calendar subject to change, so.
You can always change. You can always change, but it's a big, it's a plan.
So any questions regarding the two, or the feedback, or any of that?
So the big, big first difference is the start dates. The survey that you have says that the late start is preferred among parents in elementary schools, but the, the late start preferred parents in elementary school, but the staff prefers a earlier start.
I think, I think when you ask people, what they see is when they get out. So it's, it's really, when you ask that question and talk with groups, it's really about, are we getting out before Memorial Day, or are we not? Am I right, Steph? And so a lot of times, that's what parents and staff say. So initially, we proposed a calendar to them that actually had an even earlier August date, but we actually condensed this compromise. We took out what we call red days in the calendar to make it a little bit later, but still out by Memorial Day, and also because that matches downtown.
Out by Memorial.
Yep. And both of these are out by Memorial Day.
Right.
The difference here is if you go to a later start, you're compacting the calendar, so there's less breaks in the school year by those, what is it, four days? One, two, three, four, yeah, four days. So there are four, what you might call red days up here, where people are off, they're not in school. Those red days are not in this calendar.
The percentages here are, none of them are a majority percentage, so what happened?
Well, some people were undecided or didn't like either option.
Okay.
They were like, I don't like any of them, or they just said, I don't care.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, I had one. Ms. Cassens, do you have the, the other slide that has like a little bit more detail? Do you have that up there as well?
I do not, that has the number of days per, per.
And I, I recall an earlier meeting, I think when we first started discussing the calendar, you were, you were talking to us about how we judge the education of students by minutes.
Yep.
And from, from what I've seen in PAC provided, both of these calendars provide the same amount of minutes of education.
So both calendars have the same number of student days, both calendars have the same number of staff days. And obviously, the school schedules determine the minutes, and the school schedules are the same in both calendars.
Right, so there's going to be the same amount of work and education whichever calendar is adopted.
Yes.
Fair enough.
We didn't change days, student days. It's just how you put it on the paper.
When we originally started this, it was out of concern, at least for me, and I might have started the whole problem. But I was concerned for the parents, where both parents work, or a single mom or a single dad, how do they get through a schedule with a week off at a time? But what did you hear back from parents in regard to that? Did you get anything from the survey?
Well, it was more in the discussions, and those were at the, the SAC meetings. And those minutes are all on websites, so if people want to view them, they're all there. And a lot of what you got was, I mean, elementary parents, they, we've worked it out. Like, we're going, some of the SACs were like, we have vacation planned that week. Especially in the fall, fall is a little more traditional, you'll see some schools that do full weeks in the fall. I went to Disney in the fall, and I'll tell you what, it's like, good call. So that, I mean, there were, I also think that people have said, you know, they, they rely on family, they rely on friends. So people are like, we've, we've gotten into the rhythm of this. I think any calendar, the week off's hard, the long weekends are hard. I mean, anytime kids obviously are not in school, they have to be somewhere supervised. But I guess you'll see that it's a toss-up either way, and so that's why we headed for what's educationally good. So when our, when our high school kids can come in this week because teachers are in tutoring them, makes a big difference to get caught up here versus summer school or winter break. So we found that this week off also gave our kids a chance. We also, when we talked with the kids, the kids said, high school kids especially, said, this is appreciated. High school kids in the room, they said this was appreciated as kind of just that chance to regroup.
The October time.
Just the weeks off.
So we still have, on both calendars, we still have mostly weeks off, except for the October and the February changes.
Yep. And November is pretty much, if you look around the region, Thanksgiving's been a week off. We used to come to school Monday, Tuesday, the teachers did. A lot of the kids did not. So we had a lot of kids that would go ahead and start their vacations. It was really hard to teach those two days because you'd have so many kids absent. And most of the region, I, I don't think I saw a calendar that didn't have a week off at Thanksgiving. Or spring break. Spring break is agreed upon by the region. And if you look, sports kind of stop during those agreed-upon weeks, so you don't have competitions and things like that.
Does this, as I understand, this is, this is, does not include the other, our, our other district school, Merit Academy. Is their calendar similar to this, or is it important that the two align, or doesn't it make any difference whatsoever?
So I talked with Merit when we were surveying and talking to SAC groups, we brought that to our meeting with them, and they basically said, you do what you need to do and we'll follow. And they kind of build, they build more like this. So you'll see that when we're off for a week in, in February coming up here, they have a five-day weekend, I think they might have Thursday, Friday, and Monday off. And when we did our October break, I want to say they were similar to that, where they did a five-day weekend, so like a, a longer weekend. So they did not take the full weeks off, but if you look, a lot of their other stuff aligns. They also started a little later, and they have longer days because it's about minutes.
So did I understand you correctly that Merit said, whatever decision was made, they would fall in line with that?
Well, they're not going to, like, copy our calendar, but they will, like, if we take this October break, they'll build their break somewhere around there. If we took a week later, they'd probably build it somewhere around there. That's kind of what they were saying is, yeah. When you're off, we'll kind of be off, but they will not, they are not doing the full weeks off.
If I can add just one color to that, because you're asking very specifically about Merit. We did actually compare the calendars, and the option two calendar is closer to Merit's existing calendar. But to Tina's point, they're somewhat flexible, and they'll plan their calendar later as well. But we did actually compare them, and there's fewer days different on option two than option
So Tina, the only difference is, option number two is starting five days later than option number one, ending the same date. So within a 10-month period, there's five days of vacation days that are absent in option number two rather than option number one.
Yeah, for kind of the, what we call the red days, when nobody's here, there's four more red days up here.
Right. So we're looking at five days that are different within a 10-month period.
Kind of how they're laid out, yeah.
When I came in, I thought I had pretty much made up my mind on it, but the end by Memorial Day is really popular with everybody. I know I would want to end by Memorial Day, too.
Both calendars end on the same day.
Oh, we end on the same day?
Yep.
That's what I just said.
So they're both a good choice, yes.
Ms. Cassens, you had, I, the comments I had heard in the past was that that week off was difficult for both parents working, or single moms in particular. But in looking at these results, you're sharing that people have made the adjustments and they're fine now, is that correct?
I don't think everyone's fine. I think, I think days off are hard in either calendar, right? And the summer's hard for parents, too. And we don't have a whole lot of options up here. I know that was why we started the, the break activities, but those aren't full days. So we kind of hoped our daycares, churches, park and rec, we had hoped the community would be like, we're off, have, you know, have Vacation Bible School, have basketball camp, have, you know, this is a great week, tennis, doctors, you know, everybody come up. But it didn't, it didn't quite get to that level. So we tried to help spur it on. If you look here, though, this calendar just has one of those weeks. So it doesn't have, currently, we have two of those weeks in here and a longer April break on the current calendar. So no, I would say that still exists for some families.
Well, yes, and the percentages are very close. I was surprised.
I think a fair comparison of our characterization, just to make it somewhat clear, the results were very split on these issues. I mean, fairly consistently. Staff had a little bit more bias, but the community had very little strong bias on most of these issues. So the best characterization is, you guys need to make a decision, and I don't think they made it for you.
And that was the reason for the compromise? Because if you remember, our first calendar was different than this. So we stepped, we started back here, you know, we've stepped into this one based on compromise with the results.
So between the two calendars, parents are very, very close, and staff has a 10% difference. Except it's better for the elementary schools.
But remember, I served, when I surveyed, we surveyed on this year's calendar. Like I said, looks different.
Yeah.
So we were surveyed on the calendar we're currently living in that really had three additional long, two additional long breaks.
Could you just go over for me with the Octo, just with the October? So that seems to be the biggest difference then, is the October time off. What's the benefit to the teachers and the students on that? You said that the students liked that break in October.
I think it's just that opportu, you know, we've raised the rigor and we're working hard in our schools, so kids have been in school for one, two, you know, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, so you've got the whole quarter done. So it's that idea of like, I've been working hard, and now I get the chance to take a full mental break from my work. So I get this longer break here. You'll also find in October, and this is what we found when we had a more traditional-looking calendar, people went on vacation anyway, and so kids miss school. And October is hunting in our community. We have some families that hunt for food. So it is how they live through the summer. So when they go hunting, it is, we go out the whole week. So here, they'll maybe pick this week, and we'll be missing kids. And so when you miss a certain percentage of your class, it's really hard to continue on. So we feel like the October break gives us that. It is a mental health break, and I realize that's tough, but I think if you've been in schools, we work hard all the time, like, you don't get to be, I mean, our teachers, like, we're lucky, they, they, they're like, I might get lunch, I might get to the bathroom when I want, you know, so it, it's constant. And so it is that opportunity to, to take a minute. The interesting thing is, I would bet, most of our teachers work about three of these days, so they're also preparing lessons. It's also nice to have the back-to-back, if you look here, we have no back-to-back PD, the yellow days. This one is back-to-back, but the ninth is a workday by contract because they're preparing reform cards. So this is the only time we have back-to-back professional development, which means you teach something one day, and you get the second day to incorporate it into your instruction, and that makes a huge difference. So we feel like instructionally, mental health-wise, it's, it's a good break time for staff. And I would say now, health-wise, it's a good break for staff, if we're going to continue to have multiple viruses that hit our schools. If you were back in October, I would say we weren't tracking, we had stopped tracking our numbers, but going into the October break, ooh, we were, we had a lot of people, if you remember, that's when RSV was going around, I mean, we had a lot of, we were struggling with subs, we were struggling with kids in school, and we got a chance to take a breath.
Any comments, Mick or Sue, Dave?
Well, I, I think both the calendars are really good work. It does seem to be kind of subtle differences between them, but I really just want to commend Ms. Cassens for the presentation. I want to thank Ms. Cassens, Mr. Witt, and everybody else who participated in this, the survey that was done, the school calendar committees. It's great to see that sort of input on this. And, you know, my comment is that this whole thing started, not just from your comments at one of the meetings, David, but I received an email from a parent who was, quite frankly, just beside herself at the idea of that calendar, the one like we're currently using continuing, and was just strongly urging that we dive into this a bit more and take some time and receive some public comment. And so it seemed appropriate to do. And I'll just say that I spoke with that parent, I've spoken with several other parents, and no question that the, the week-long breaks is a hardship on either those households where you have two working parents, or on those households where it's one parent struggling to do it all. And I, I heard from one parent who could not keep her job at one of our major retailers because she could not go to her employer and get a week off almost every month. It just couldn't be done, and she could not continue to work there with the school calendar. So on the one hand, I respect how, I mean, both these calendars and the calendars that the school is always doing, and all the other schools, they're, they're in attempt to balance the various interests that you have between our professional educators, between our parents, between the needs our students have, between the, the way we're driven by academic events or athletic competitions. So it's, there's never going to be a perfect one that solves all the problems. But that really hit home to me was, I think the high priority for me is making sure that we have less weeks off for certain people who are just not going to be able to do that and are going to be really struggling to get by. And when you take into account what we've put a lot of parents through already with the school closures, they, they need that break. They, they need to be able to count on school being open and not being asked to take off time from work that they can't afford to take, so.
Sue?
I think you bring up a good point because the week off benefits high school students. The, the percentage of adopting that week off in October was higher for high school students and parents. But I think you bring up a good point that a week off for a high school student can, is self-sufficient, where elementary cannot be left home alone, and they, they do need childcare, but high schoolers are home alone on, on your Zoom all the time, so I think you bring up a good point.
Mick?
Well, they're very similar. I like that school ends before Memorial Day, that applies on both calendars. As I shared earlier, the comments I was hearing was the difficulty with the week off. I mean, I think either one would work. This is, am I correct that this is quite a bit different than the one we're currently using?
Correct.
That it serves all those purposes better, correct?
Anything else? Well, I, I really want to, it's, it's hard to be accommodating to everyone and to find the best path, and I thought you did a great job, but thank you, that was a lot of work going into all this, an amazing amount of work. Thank you. Thank you for everybody who participated in it. We already, one of the things was to get rid of so much time off in blocks of time, but people accommodated. I know that I talked to, I had quite a few phone phone calls, emails from people saying they were struggling with the week of time off. And I'm talking about parents, not students, not teachers. But we still, we still do have these weeks off on both calendars. The big deal to me is what you said originally. I was ready to come in and vote for option number two, after reviewing this and looking over. But then I hear from you the, the advantages and the benefits of having that week off in October at the end of the quarter. I didn't realize when I decided on option two earlier, or leaning that way pretty hard, that it's the end of the quarter. Now the kids have some time off before we start the next quarter. And we still have days off. So, and, and the difference in the parents, teachers, and students is, does not seem to be significant. And so.
The interesting thing to me was how many, this was a shock to me, how many did support the full weeks.
Yeah, the full weeks, yes.
That was surprising to me.
Yeah, that, looking at that, I was, I was surprised to see that as well. So to lay my cards on the table, I originally, this afternoon, was wanting option two, but I see the benefits now of option one. And so that's where I'm seated now. So we need to have a motion, we need to have a vote on this. So I need someone to make a motion on whether it's option, what the board wants to do, option one or two.
Sue, have you recognized?
Please.
So David, I'm going to make a motion for option number two. I'm going to add one thing, which was a decisive factor to me, is I like that we start later, on August 23rd, in option number two. Taking into account what Ms. Casson said about the air conditioning and things like that, that's a problem for me with option number one, is, is the August 17th start date. So that's, that's one, that's just one thing I'm going to add, as I make the motion that we adopt option number two.
I would like another point of discussion. Now it's on the table.
Okay.
That, can we have a late, later start and have option one?
You have to take out red days. This is how it works. So the red days have to come out to have a later start, or you have to go past Memorial Day. So.
Okay.
I mean, that's what it's all about, is, is, there are four more red days in the chunk of school.
Got it.
In option one. In option two, those four red days are gone.
Well, the kids, you don't mind having four less days?
All right. So, so we have a motion on the table for option number two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any, any further discussion?
You guys could have hired nine superintendents in that time.
You know, I, I do have to respond to that. I, we, I, I have prolonged this because I really want to do what's the right thing for, what do the parents want? What's the staff and the kids? What's best for that? And you know what? I know it seems like a silly little thing, but I wanted it to take the time, so.
Then you should have done it with the superintendent. You're here.
No more interruptions, please. None. All right, roll call, please.
Bates?
Uh, yes.
Illingworth?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Rusterholz?
No.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Next. We are on the extension of facilities contract for Merit Academy. Mr. Witt?
Yes, this is largely a housekeeping point, but we had a five-year charter agreement with Merit Academy, but only signed a three-year facility agreement. It's been brought up a number of times, Stewie. Why aren't they the same? They should be the same. And so this is, this is simply an action to align the facility and the charter agreement. So we have one consistent story here. The motion requested is to approve the extension of the facilities contract with Merit Academy from three years to five years to match the charter contract term in years.
Any questions?
Some questions.
Sue?
No.
Mick? I know we had discussed that when we were chartering, and that was really a point of discussion, why weren't the two the same? So I think that, yes, I think that we need to reconcile the two as well. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second.
Roll call.
Bates?
Yes.
Illingworth?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Rusterholz?
Aye.
On to C. Select a new DAC appointment. Mr. Bates is coming off of the District Accountability Committee, and we need to replace his seat. We have two people who had been suggested to get, to come on the Accountability Committee. And Don Zaleski is one of the people who had applied for the Board of Directors position. And Steve Harland had also had requested. And I just have something that I wanted to say about Mr. Harland. I don't know if many of you know him. He has two kids that had come to, who, one is currently in Woodland Park High School, and one has already graduated. And his son is a junior in the school. He served as the director for the band boosters. He sat on the School Accountability Committee several years ago. He was also involved in Parks and Recreation. He was a coach for 10 years, coaching baseball, basketball, soccer, and volleyball. He has a web design company, and he is currently an advocate, family advocate for community partnership. He's also involved in, in church and in the worship team at, at church. So he also helps with middle school and high school youth group. So that's something, that's about Mr. Harland. There anything that, about Don? He, we talked with him a couple of weeks ago. You know Don very well, so.
I do know him a little bit. Most of what I know of him, I think, is what the public has seen. He has twice applied for a vacancy on this board. He has twice interviewed back in the summertime, and again, this is just a few weeks ago. And so he's been questioned by this board. He's been seen by the public. His name has been out there for some time as somebody who's interested in volunteering in some way to assist the school district. You know, and I, and so I think he has demonstrated, he's got deep roots in this community. I think he's lived here about 30 years, raised two children through adulthood here. He, he is, from what I understand, he is a longtime BOD contractor, especially with IT. He does go to church here, at Our Lady of the Woods Catholic Church. And I have appreciated his responses during the interview. I have appreciated his willingness to serve. I think he would be a good man, an intelligent voice, and have a volunteer's heart for the work. So.
Anyone else? Well, I need a motion?
Well, if you, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll go ahead and move that we appoint Mr. Zaleski.
I second that.
Any further discussion?
Bates?
Aye.
Illingworth?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Rusterholz?
Aye.
On to.
Question, just information.
Reports and updates.
Normally, we won't comment on reports and updates in general. However, the board may wish to do board reports, as you will. So I'm going to point out a couple of things this time, simply because you had asked for, for comment. We did have some illness going through the high school. I, I think it persists. We've had four to six teachers out on kind of a rolling basis over the last couple of weeks, and 40 to 50 students out at various times. We asked, sent out communications asking to please keep your children at home if, if you believe they're ill. And that probably elevated the number of students that were out by a bit. But it, it hasn't gotten more severe, but it has been steady.
So do we have, I, I don't know, I don't mean to surprise you or anything, but I assume we would have a policy concerning any kind of, like when the flu's going through. Like I remember when our, my daughter was in high school, 2006, there was, I don't know if it was that year or the year before, there's lots of teachers out, lots of kids out. Do we have a policy?
We have a protocol, I would say.
Okay.
A specific policy. The protocol is to monitor the levels. If it becomes to a level of concern, the district has done a very good job of communicating out with parents, the high schools specifically where it's occurring, to make them aware and to encourage them to, to be, you know, more conservative in watching for their children and not sending them to school. If it were to elevate higher, we'd have a discussion around whether or not we had to, you know, have closures or rotating closures. But we're, we're not at that level. It's, this isn't a COVID pandemic level of.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any questions for Mr. Witt?
No.
All right, now is the time for directors' comments, or any directors have anything they'd like to say?
No.
Well, I do. I tell you, I get, I've never had so many emails since holding this position. And I really try hard to answer as many as I possibly can. I just don't have the time for the length of the emails. So that's why I asked before. If you, if you could make your emails brief, it would, it would help me to get through to more of them. So I really appreciate that. And for those of you who I haven't answered, I apologize. I'm still trying to get to them as we go. But I wanted to answer just a couple of them tonight, just real, real quick. So the one thing that I wanted to talk about was, I had a lot of people ask about holding the meetings in the big auditorium so more people could show up. I had students, I've had teachers asking, can we please do that? Here, here is a concern that I have. Now, tonight has been a wonderful meeting, and so was last time. But I, I know that we have, there's been times where, like I've talked about it over and over again, there are a lot of high passions that are going on. And, and my concern is, does it get out of control? Does, what, what's going to happen if, if we have a big group of people and things get out of control? So that's one of my concerns.
Stop doing crappy things.
Come on, regular order, please. So the, the next thing was, you know, well, we all know what goes on. But so that was my only concern about it, about having it in the big, in the big room. But, you know, I think that if we can, I, I would like to see it go back there, especially if we have lots of people and we're at capacity here. One of the other things that a lot of people called me about, or emailed me about, was about selling a school. And specifically Gateway, or Summit, or Columbine. And I have to say, I have never had a conversation with anybody about it. It has never been on the horizon for me. I can't imagine a circumstance where I would ever want to sell a school. These are wonderful facilities, and I expect our school district to grow and grow and grow. So no, there's never been conversation about selling a school. The other thing is, though, like what we mentioned, I guess Mrs. Steen mentioned it before, is that, you know, as our schools are half-full, school boards have been talking about this since 2012, of what do we do? Do we need to consolidate schools, or things like that? So I think that that's something that we're going to have to discuss as a community. What do we want for our schools? So that's just, that's me talking. There has been no conversation with the school board. I'm just talking to you from me, answering emails like this. So none of that has gone on. But those were the two main things that I've heard lately. And, you know, I, I'd still like to hear from you. If you could just put something in the subject line, and just a little bleep, I'd like to be able to answer those kind of things. So, anyway, thank you for your time this evening. Thank you for everybody coming. I do appreciate you all. But I think that is the last thing on our agenda. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Bates?
Aye.
Illingworth?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Rusterholz?
Aye.
Thank you again, everyone.